So I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Public Works for September 19th, November 19th to order. I want to gain time back. So can you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For silence? Thank you. So for the record, the entire board is here. Bob, Richard, Barbara, the press. We have the General Manager, Austin Calloman, Assistant General Manager, Robin Davis, and Mike Hoffman, our solicitor, is online.
Andrew.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're off to a good start here. After last night, I think we know enough about each other. All right. So the first item on the agenda is open forum, general discussion on awarding the bid for the new Lewis BPW water tower. And I'm going to turn that over to Austin and GMB.
The water tower has been in the works ever since the board went in with the city and Sussex County to purchase the Jones Farm. We carved out a piece of property that is to be utilized for the water tower. So we've gone through, GMB's done all the design. We put it out to bid in the beginning of October. We got the bids back. There was one qualified bidder that submitted. And what you have in front of you is GMB's recommendation letter on that water tower. A little bit of history behind it. The current water tower that's installed was installed back in the 1950s. That is the only water tower that we have in our system. There was a discussion, I believe, back in the 2002 timeframe when impact fees were established about a second water tower. That was not preceded with. And so now we're at the point where our demand obviously has grown throughout the years. And so as part of this project, we had GMB look at both a 750 and a million gallon tower so that the board could see what the cost differences were between the two. And what you have before you is the cost differences between the two. We'll get into it, but the proposals came in a little bit higher than expected. We met with that contractor and we came up with some value engineering ideas that we think put us where we need to be with the option of going for supplemental funding, which we've started a million dollars through the SRF program and then also the company of the 900,000 Arpa funds.
So Austin?
Yeah.
Before it. So we are doing this because we're doing a second water tower because? And the existing water tower is how big?
The existing water tower is 300,000 gallons. And you're doing this because even to look at your demand when it looks like fire flow, we are nowhere close to where we should be for fire flow and then future demands. And from an engineering perspective, GMB can provide kind of the background, how they did the calculations, et cetera.
I mean, we've done all that a few times, but I guess to summarize that, I'd say that under our current well supply conditions, we're at a storage deficit of over a million gallons. With the new header pipe that's going in, our modeling predicts that we'll be at a deficit of about 700,000 gallons.
So? Before this or after this?
Before.
So right now, the header pipe's under construction. Before the header pipe, I guess current conditions, because the header pipe's not operational yet, we're at a storage deficit of over a million gallons. Once our modeling predicts that once that pipe goes in the ground and we start utilizing it from the wells to the water treatment facility, we'll be at a deficit of roughly 700,000 gallons. Which is to further your discussion that our modeling suggests that you could go with the 750,000 gallon tank. Modeling is modeling, right? So if it's just, you know, 10% off or 15% off, then you start incrementally moving up into a greater storage deficit and the million gallon tank looks more inviting. We say in our letter that if the board can find the funds to do the million gallons, we feel that it's a cost effective time to do it because you got a $600,000 difference between the 750,000 gallon and the million gallon, which is, shows really good economy of scale in terms of dollars per gallon.
Charlie, just amplifying our discussion that we had. So the other option that I asked Charlie to look into, and he did, was, you know, what if we waited 30 or 40 years? Put a 750 tank in, waited 30 or 40 years, and replaced the 300,000 gallon tank if we needed at that point? We'd save the time value of money. But as Charlie pointed out, with the way the tank has been up kept, it doesn't have a lifespan as long as it's maintained. And the cost of building a new tank at that point, you, right now, the cost of the extra 250,000 gallons is only 10% of the price. So in the future, you'd be, while you'd save the time value of money, you'd actually be paying more. So, you know, Charlie, put that to bed in my mind at least. Thank you.
You've got to keep it in mind that this is a trade-off between getting a little water from the ground and getting an easier task and going to the big tank. So at some point in the future, you could put another well in someplace near as a, maybe the system, you do the same thing. And we're not fucking money. Another fuck like that, not really, not money. And you could say the same thing, maybe you should build a million water because it costs it down and it's going to even further down.
I only asked a question to sort of get some of this out in the open because I know there have been discussions going on, but, you know, since we're in a public meeting, public's got a right to know.
What's also a helpful data point is what is the future duration timeframe that the 750 or million gallons is projected to be sufficient? It's anticipating development in how many years?
2042. All the projections for growth, et cetera, are out to 2042.
But remember, a lot of the growth is in the board's hands. So when you sit back and you look, Mitchell's Corner was a decision by the board. You had to go for CPCN. Tower Hill, decision of the board, you had to go for CPCN. So growth is in the control of the board. A lot of, everything out New Road is undesigned at CPCN. Once you get across Canary Creek, you have to go and get the CPCN rights to every single property.
Have to have a choice to do it.
No, you have a choice, but what we're saying is like there's a process to that. And that process is, you know, Mike's firm has done this many a times where we sit down and we go through each step. We did it for what, five properties? Yeah.
And we've got Outfall Preserve, or whatever it's called, coming on. And there's more that can infill the city, that are more lots that could add a lot to our demand. And I worry about that, that they're cramming more and more buildings into properties that are available in Lewis.
I disagree slightly inasmuch as there really is not that much open, buildable space in Lewis, in the city limits of Lewis that were required to serve.
The only thing I can't speak to is what plans the University of Delaware might have to expand their campus. You know, I don't know that, but I agree with Tom. I think Henlopen Bluff, this, and then whatever becomes of Robert Kennedy's property.
Humber property would be the last one.
Oh, right, yeah.
And to your point, Cape Henlopen State Park's got plans.
True.
On the downside, you know, if the Fourth Street Forest purchase?
Falls through.
Falls through, there could be a lot of houses in there.
Yeah.
And I think it may help just from the monetary standpoint. I know I circulated an email to everybody so that they can understand how we got to the possibility of supplemental in the Arpa. So you had the original loan amount, which is 5.25 million. The common header project was 1.545 million. We did $140,000 change order for the caustic tank, so we're estimating about 1.7 million is what we'll have into the common header. Leaves you with about 3.5 million. Then you have 900,000 in Arpa, which gets you to 4.4, and then a million dollar supplemental gets you to 5.4.
Why were the estimates so far off from the bids? That bothers me.
So I guess to start on that, the estimates were given to us by different tank manufacturers, and they were over three years old or close to three years old. So there's the inflation factor. The other thing in those estimates, all of them figured on a standard design, foundation design, not a piling design. And we, when we did the geotechnical investigation, we found a very, very, very soft clay layer, not far from the surface thick, which necessitates deep piles. That factor alone is probably worth six or 700,000 escalation, the geotech. But most of it's related to the inflation and so forth.
So we really should have asked you for updated estimates if they were three years old before we decided how much money we needed.
Funding came through like a year ago.
Yeah, the funding process probably started two years ago or more. So we were using those estimates thinking they were fairly accurate when we went after the money.
And the companies that gave you those early estimates didn't bid?
They did bid. They're the low bidder. We were working with CBNI, who's done several tanks in the area. There's another company, Caldwell Tank, that submitted a bid, came in much later than the bid date. There was a mix-up with Federal Express. And those numbers were actually even higher than CBNI's.
And as part of this, because obviously you're looking at a bid that's about 5.63 million, we sat down with the contractor and said, okay, from a value engineering perspective, what are things that we can look at, massage, take off? And we realized through that conversation that a lot of the things that come through CBNI, their quality is a little bit, you know, upper echelon, if we want to call it that. And they used examples of towers that are local and some of the ways that the other company, Tidewater Utilities, what they optioned for, what they didn't option for. And so there's a list attached in the GMB package that shows some of the things that potentially could be cost savings. So it's just, it's a food for thought. It's an up to number. You can probably do even further. We just, in the essence of time, wanted to put something together so that you guys could understand kind of the, we say cost savings, like the fence is still going to cost us money. It's just, we're not going to include it as part of the funding package. We can go to our typical fence contractor and do something similar, not pay prevailing wages, et cetera.
The Schedule B numbers, they're not up to numbers. They're estimates and it could go higher.
They're the contingents.
The contingent items, yeah.
Yeah. You see, that's a very small percentage of the total.
Can I ask you a couple of questions on the so-called tank savings? What's the, what's behind the Delaware licensed surveyor?
So we require for, when they get in, the contractor gets in the field to do construction layout, we require that that surveyor be licensed in the state of Delaware. This contractor's from out of state and that their surveyor doesn't have a Delaware license.
So it'll still, it's still a requirement and I still want somebody from Delaware to be, okay.
But I feel like that's, that's one that I think the board can entertain pretty comfortably because we're involved in the project and we've done all the survey of the site. So we'll make sure the tank is put in the right spot.
The concrete floor coating, what is that about? And where is?
That's that, like epoxy coating that people put on their garage floors.
And so where is that going? Is that not needed or?
It's not, well, it's not something that they typically do. And let me just say, when we went about doing the design, so we got numbers from CBNI, they're all budgetary numbers, but when we set about doing the design, we were looking at giving you the Cadillac system of tanks. So when Ben and I were putting all this together, we always went with the top of the line, you know, option. So that's kind of what that represents. It's just that epoxy coating on the floor.
And it's the floor inside.
It's the floor inside the tank. It's the concrete floor.
Inside the tank.
Yeah, in the bottom floor. You'd walk in a double set of doors.
That space that you would go in.
The little inverted cone?
It's a small working space.
I think it's no semantic. It's not in the tank, the water portion, it's in the pedestal.
It's the concrete floor.
On the inside portion.
Yeah.
So it's not.
On the ground.
On the ground.
On the ground.
So it's not scrimping on anything related to water.
Okay, so is that something that's eliminated or it's, we would want to do it?
It would be up to the board. So they, they've told us that they do many, many tanks with no coating whatsoever. But that's like I said, that's like.
And that's a choice that BPW could have had a later date?
And they, and yes, and in our discussions, they said, you know, even that's something even maybe some board people could go and Home Depot and buy the epoxy coating and do it themselves.
What's the deal with the way the 16 inch corrosive allowance?
So that one's a more interesting one. So again, that's a, you know, again, we wanted to go with the top of the line. And that's kind of what they term as a belts and suspenders type option where they provide, the steel of the tank is actually 1/16 inch thicker to allow for any potential corrosion down the line. As the tank manufacturer said to us, that's belts and suspenders because what it really comes down to, this corrosion and that allowance, is how well your tanks are maintained. They have tanks all over the world, really, where they're, and they're in areas where, you know, they may, they may have rust on it for four or five years, be pretty ratty looking, and they don't, they don't get around to painting them, you know? Here, we've specified the top of the line coating system for these tanks, okay? You're in an area, Lewis, where I doubt that's going to happen. I doubt the tank's going to be looking ratty for any length of time. You're going to get and repaint it when it's necessary. So they look at that as more like belts and suspenders just in case.
So it's an outside of the tank coating?
No, it's a thicker steel. It's a thicker steel. The manufacturer, CBNI, actually has said to us, Austin and myself, we were in meetings together, he's saying that he thinks it's belt suspenders not necessary. We dug a little deeper. So what are, what are other people doing, like Tidewater, especially in the area? And Tidewater did the tank at the Beacon School just recently and one in Smyrna. But the Beacon School's probably more representative, like the saw there or whatever. They did both. So they went with the top of the line coating system with the 1/16 inch allowance.
It really comes down to maintenance. You're putting a coating on the outside that protects it for 25 years, at least that's what it says. It's like when you go get a 30-year roof. If you stay up on maintenance, you don't have to worry about the 16 inch corrosion because you're putting on a protective coating that will protect from rust and corrosion and that kind of stuff.
It's kind of related to Tom's issue about the longevity of the existing tank.
Right, as I was just saying, you know, our existing tank is seven years old. And as Charlie has stated, that, you know, it's got an indefinite lifetime as long as it's maintained. So we've got a proven track record of maintaining tanks. And I don't see any reason why that isn't a reasonable assumption for the future.
And they, you know, the Chicago Bridge and Iron, they pointed us to that question about how long can a tank last? They pointed to the fact that there's numerous bridges all over America that were, you know, built in the early 1900s and, you know, bridges are painted periodically or whatever. So the lifespan is almost indefinite depending on how welds.
But the grinding of the welds?
It's the biggest ticket item, but it's essentially when you're looking at, so when they do their welds, if, if you run into a situation where you have a thicker weld or a bead in between two pieces of steel, that what we quoted as part of this bid is to grind that down so that it's smooth. And what CBNI came back and said was, our welds are really, really good. And if you go look at the Tidewater tower, they are, they are pretty good.
So we, this is again, we went with the Cadillac of the systems. There's an ACE standard for preparation of the seams before they, before they paint the tank and there's grinding involved. We went with the next higher classification than what they normally see. And I guess part of that reason is we had worked with another tank manufacturer on another project and there was some complaints about the aesthetics, looking from the ground, that they could see these seams. So we went with the next level and I honestly not thinking that the dollar value would be $121,000.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, I mean, CBNI, I mean, the quality of their welding, I mean, they, that's what they are. And a good stitch weld aesthetically is pleasing to the eye. I mean, you don't have it. A guy, you know, people who don't know how to run either automated or stick welding, that's where you have more of a concern with the aesthetics.
Richard, have you ever seen one go up? So they have these rectangular plates that are on a curvature and they go around and around and around and up and up and up, but every single one of them are welded to one another.
And they're all unique.
Those are welded, those are the welds we're talking about.
It's like a big jigsaw puzzle. They're made back in the factory and they're all unique and go together. But.
Tidewater.
I was just going to say, so if you go over to the Beacon School, they did not have that upgraded NACE standard for prep welds. So you, you can go to the Tidewater's tank there, Beacon School, and see the quality that you would be anticipating here.
Is there any concern that CBNI is being sold to a private equity firm and that's going to happen before the end of the year? Are we concerned that, you know, the quality may suffer, they may pull people, they may cut people out of their organization, that sort of thing?
Well, that's news to me.
Yeah, unless you heard a rumor, they're around.
No, no, they're, on October 7th, they announced that they were selling CBNI to Mason Capital Management.
So I don't think I can completely answer your question, but we have seen quite a bit of that in the engineering industry where private equity firms are buying up firms like GMB or, you know, bigger firms or slightly, not smaller firms typically, but, and generally they still allow those firms to operate like they always have. They're just under a bigger umbrella above the equity firm's holdings, I guess you'd say. I don't know if that helps with that question, though.
I think to summarize, what we've done is, if you look at that sheet that Richard was going off of, we've gotten it down to a point that puts us at about 5.349 million. And it allows that if the board wants to follow suit with, for example, what Tidewater did at their tank, you can have the 16th inch allowance included and still be under the 5.4. The supplemental request, which from a staff level, we started with DHSS, knowing that the second item on this agenda is to move forward with binding commitments. There's a closing associated with that, and I can describe that in a little bit more detail, but it's typical like any other loan. You would go through closing, resolutions come back to the board, they go back to the city, you go through the process. The reason that we went that route is because it's an administrative approval. As long as you fit the box of what the supplemental request is for, they administratively can do it. It doesn't go back to anybody like we act. So you make the request, you provide the information, it goes up through the DHSS secretary, they provide the binding commitment letter, and you go through the process like any other loan.
Which is typically a faster process.
But yeah, typically, like I said, we've done it one other time, which was on the Headworks project. So that, that's how we got, that's why our magic number was 5.4 million. That shows that we, we believe that we have enough funding to cover the construction costs for the entire project. There's going to be engineer and contract administration and RPR costs, which we feel that from our perspective, we can include through like our O&amp;M, we'll still track it in construction progress, but we won't necessarily seek reimbursement through the loan for those costs.
And part of the increase perceived from when the bid documents went out is the fact that we've got to pay prevailing wages in order to get the money at the lower interest rate?
Yes, so you always had to pay the prevailing wage rates. If you go get funding, that's a requirement. I would say the biggest impact here is based off the borings, having to do the piling foundation versus the standard foundation played a big part. I mean, obviously there's an inflation factor, but, you know, at the tune of 600 or 700,000 dollars, that's a pretty big chunk of change.
If you have the cash on hand, you didn't have to pay back.
What can we sell?
But, you know, getting back to the capacity, it's a trade-off of production and storage.
Yes, yep.
So how much would it cost to install another well to supply more water?
So you, I would say somewhere in the 250 to 350 range for a production well the size we're talking about. Correct me if you have better numbers than me.
That could pretty much close the gap.
In the same location?
It would, but then it also has the long-term maintenance costs associated with it you'd have to pay.
Potential of, like I said, if you're, because we're going through the whole PFAS discussion, that may be an added cost from like a GAC or resin if you have to do treatment.
So on the PFAS, because we didn't put this in the letter, but on the PFAS issue, so there's a potential, and I don't know how real it is or not, but potential that you may have to go with new wells, deeper wells, different aquifer because of whatever levels you might have there. And generally on the whole, if you go to deeper aquifer, it's going to pump less. Okay, so your flow rates are going to go down. So there's pressure there that the PFAS would cause. And then the other factor related to PFAS is if you have to put some sort of treatment system in, that's going to limit the output, your flow rate coming out of that treatment system because of the head losses, et cetera. So all the parameters and variables that go in to this sizing calculation, maybe not all, but most of them, really the pressure is generally for things to go down, the flow rate to go down, not to go, not to go up, okay, in the future. The aquifer itself, we don't know how many more people are going to draw from it, so the pump, the current pumps as they are now may not yield as much. And really where we're at with the numbers, just the pure numbers, I don't know if that came through in the bid recommendation, yes, by the pure numbers, the 750 made it, but really it just made it. Because really, when you crank the numbers, the number, the capacity required out of the new tank is 700,000 gallons. So it's only like a 50,000 gallon factor safety, if you want to call it that. And all these pressures in the future are really more towards going, things going down in terms of your existing pump rates. So that gives you, you know, it gives you a little buffer there if you go with the million. And then also, I was leaving this, and I know they're, they want to sell tanks and so forth, but the tank manufacturer said, he's never put a tank in where, he's never had a client come back and say, you know what, I wish I didn't put that larger tank in. So for whatever that's worth.
Is there, will there, is there an expectation that with completion of either 750 or a million, that residents will see a pressure increase or decrease with this additional capacity?
No, I mean, we did a lot of modeling, right, hydraulic modeling, to try to make sure that that did not happen. The top of the tank, the elevation of the top of the tank is set, that was a factor. I mean, I think people right next to the tank are going to see an increase in pressure, but not in a detrimental way.
So the pressure is related to the height of the tank?
So the pressure is related to the height of the tank? And that the height of the new tank is figured at slightly higher than the existing tank? But not enough, like Vince just said, that the pressure would be that noticeable even to the people nearby?
You're doing a lot of things system-wide. So if you're upgrading pipes that are 6-inch for 8-inch and then you're doing 8 for 10, or you're putting a new canal crossing in, I mean, all those things have an impact because you have a friction loss when you're sitting there with a 6-inch pipe that has 2 inches of regulation or whatever it may be.
So as we sit here, we've talked about a lot of things.
Yep.
The strong recommendation, I think, is a million gallons?
I think, well, I think what GMB's saying is if you're future-proofing, a million, in an engineering perspective, not putting words in your mouth, makes sense from a cost factor. I think what Press is coming is that he's saying, could you all set that by having an additional well? Which is, if you think about it, that's how we've operated in the past. It's just it doesn't, if a well goes down, you're not necessarily protected by having storage in the air.
I thought Press's comment was more cost avoidance, but he might.
The new wells, they pointed out, is 250,000. So it's only half of it, and you've got the maintenance cost on it down the line. As Charlie and Vince have pointed out, though, there's so many uncertainties, the modeling, calculations, growth rate, and also the condition of the aquifer. Because the one thing we've left out of this is, you know, we've been in a, I'm still gonna call it a 42-day drought, even with our 10th of an inch of rain. And we've been seeing this more and more. And while it doesn't impact the aquifer today, it could start affecting the aquifer in the future.
That could be a bigger problem, just the size of the tank. That's a totally different problem.
Well, not really, because you could run, you could be running the wells longer to fill the tank because it would increase the cycle time.
And let me just throw this out. I mean, because the Caldwell tank bid was not a qualified bid, but still, they were numbers that tell you, you could read into a little bit. The spread between the 750 and the million on the Caldwell tank was close to $1.2 million. So, you know, that to me kinda almost says you're getting a pretty good deal for that incremental 250,000 with the CBNI bid, for whatever that's worth. I know that's not a valid bid, but it is.
What was the difference in 750?
750 to 1 million? So the Caldwell was 6.52 million dollars, whereas this is 5.6.
They'll sell a million-dollar difference.
Yeah.
Mike, should we be discussing this? I mean, that was in a qualified bid, so.
I mean, you have the bids that are in front of you, but I mean, I think it's overall context. It's not being offered as far as a bid in front of you, but it's context of the cost. I think that's fine.
We did do modeling of that, yep. We had done the modeling back, it was when, remember, I can't remember the fellow's name that came in.
We haven't solved that problem.
He did the risk analysis, that's what we.
No, the pipe's not installed enough to get data from.
So we really don't know what the capacity of that pipe is.
Only based on like the hydraulic modeling that we've done. Well, it's all brand-new pipe.
Well, we do know that, right now, we know that we can pump 2,050 gallons per minute through the existing system. And with the new pipe, and like you're saying, all the roughness coefficient data, et cetera, we can run 3,050 gallons per minute through it based on the model. That's what we did put in the model. So when I was thinking about that, I was like, well, even if that's off by 15 or 20%, that really kicks up your deficit in storage to think about. And you're exactly right, you could handle it by well in the future if you need to. I mean, that is an option.
Provided that the aquifer is productive and...
If it makes you feel any better, the last time this was discussed was in the 1950s. This is kinda historical.
Yeah.
No, I did discuss it in 2001. At that time, I had a 500,000-gallon tank recommendation, so we're up a little bit.
I mean, financially.
What was your recommendation in the 50s, Charlie?
Ben's not here to remind me.
You know, financially, like Press said, you're looking at the cost today versus cost in the future. I don't know what a well in the future is gonna cost. You're also talking about if you drill a well that's, you know, 500 feet deep, it may be more expensive. It depends on how that all lands. I think there's risk in any decision and all you're trying to do is draw your risk down to the lowest amount possible. From a cost perspective, if you're looking at projects, you can prolong a project. You can dip into the line of credit if that's something that you wanna do to cover those costs. So it's, there's a lot on the table and we understand that. Our funds are there, which is one of the reasons why the expedited nature of trying to award this, making sure that that's contractually obligated by the end of the year.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just summarize all what you're saying is, I think the way we catch it in our recommendation was that if the board could afford the 1 million, we thought it was the right way to go. But that's a big question we know in your guys' minds.
Yes, I'm just thinking, do we really need it and do we really need it now?
So, Press, you know, I've been thinking about this question for months and months. So, you know, there's all kinds of methodology for sizing these elevated storage tanks. And the methodology we've used is one that GMB has used for years and years on many projects. And you've seen those spreadsheets and the curves and the diurnal and so forth. But 10 states has other methodology and they have a rule of thumb that your tank capacity should be equal to your average, average flow rate. So I'm guessing, I know we peak at 2 million in July and all, but I'd say average, we're in that 1 million gallon plus range. So just going by that rule of thumb, you know, we're still probably right on the edge, you know, with the million gallon. Now, we crunched the numbers and got a little deeper with our methodology, but.
But we really would have a million three in the air.
We'd have a million three. But, you know, if you use that rule of thumb, we're like right there with that average, you know, daily.
Yeah, and I mean, I agree with Press. If there's a way to postpone it, which is why I asked the questions that I did yesterday of Charlie, and you, it would be fine. But seeing the numbers, it seems to me that it would be short-sighted and risky to not go to the million-gallon tank.
I feel the same way, unless we commit to not accepting any more outside-the-city use of our water.
I think the issue with that is then you're allowing other water suppliers to infringe into your area. That's always been an issue. I mean, even when senators and governors and all those guys were being built out, Todd Water was able to get their hand in.
And it's still drawing from the same aquifer.
Can we sort of get a sense where everybody's at at this point?
Are we getting, before, are we getting anticipated impact fees from developers that would help fund loan payments on this water tower? Regardless of which size is taken?
I mean, I defer to Austin. I know you get impact fees from every development and they were certain dollar value, but now they've changed to a higher dollar value. So for every unit that comes on from this day forward, it'll be a higher number. But that's an Austin question, really.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about a significant increase in water, which was duly noted. I mean, it hasn't been changed in 22 years. You have Mitchell's Corner, which is 290-plus homes. So do your math, 290 times, I think the new rate's 46 roughly. So you're talking about over a million dollars there. The new one, the overlook, that's going through planning commission or site development review now. That's got, I think, 89 units. And then you have Hennelow Bluff, which is another 100 and something. So there's, I mean, with the development that's coming on, you're receiving those impact fees and those can go to capital projects, which includes this. I mean, it's a capacity-driven project.
So move this along. I think maybe the best thing to do is get a motion in a second and then we can go for discussion and proceed from there.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with the million-dollar tank.
Good try, Bob.
Yeah, sorry.
So how much would he give us for a million dollars?
Second.
Okay, on the question?
You're called, Bill?
No.
That's the discussion, that's the discussions.
Okay.
And the only thing, just to clarify and for the record, the motion would be to award the bid for the million-gallon tank as submitted.
Thank you, Mike, that's correct.
Mike, just for clarity, and it may be kind of a joint discussion here, but with the cost savings piece, is that something that would be like a credit change order? That would be one of the first things you would do? Which would provide the credit to bring it down to the anticipation of under 6 million?
So this is, you have a bid, and so just so I understand, so you have the bid that included these alternatives. And so your award would, if your award is seeking the alternatives, should also incorporate that in the motion, yes?
They weren't alternatives, they were value-engineered after the bids. So the motion would be to award the 1 million dollar?
Gotcha. The 1 million gallon tank, subject to some value engineering.
Subject to value engineering as described by Austin and Vince and Charlie.
And that's the, Bob, you're okay with that modified motion?
Yes.
And who seconded it?
I did, Richard.
Richard, are you okay with the modified motion?
Yes.
And just for clarity, I'm assuming that includes everything that's on this cost-saving measure. Do you want the quarter-end, are the 16th-inch steel included? Or do you want that removed? That's the only thing that Tidewater included in their bid that we potentially could exclude from ours, assuming that we stay up on maintenance. That's the only thing.
And that would bring the total to more than 6 million for that?
Slightly over.
Yes, slightly over.
Yeah.
I would say that we still, this is up to you, I think, and Mike, I would say we still award it on the bid received and handle that as a change order deduction.
If everybody's comfortable with it, what we can do is you've seen what the numbers are. So you can award based off of the current bid, Mike, you can correct me, award off the current bid and allow staff to work on a balancing change order or work on a credit change order that would include the items in here, plus or minus whichever ones you want to exclude.
Yes, I think that's exactly how you would do it, but you would still be directing staff. So you're awarding the bid and directing staff. And so to the extent there is clarity needed on what that direction is, I would incorporate that into the motion.
So Mike, can you tell us what the motion should be?
Certainly, I think the one open to Austin's point is whether you go with the thicker steel or not. I don't know, Bob, it's your motion, what you wanna present.
It really comes down, I mean, what the tank manufacturer said was it's an O&amp;M piece. So as long as you stay on top of O&amp;M, it shouldn't be an issue. But what we asked was what are others doing in our area? And that's where Tidewater came back and said they did belts and suspenders, which is thicker steel, Cadillac of coating.
I mean, personally, I would probably do the thicker steel just because it's, you know, it's a more robust thing and you got a million gallons of water, some 7 million pounds up in the air. So.
If I can make a suggestion, I think you can do this one of two ways. You can proceed with the motion, and I'm happy to recite it, which would include the larger steel, the thicker steel. But if there's a question among the board as to whether that's what you wanna do, that is go with the thicker steel with the added cost or, you know, focusing on maintenance to go forward with the more thins steel, you can have that discussion now. In other words, if that's the key open issue in terms of what direction you go, you might wanna get the temperature of the board or you can just go forward with the motion and see where it falls. I think those are your two options. So Bob, anyone can make a motion if you wanna drive it with making a motion or if someone wants to chime in on just the debate. That's the will of the board.
Wasn't there already a motion made and seconded?
There was, and yep, good, that, well, thank you. So the short answer, there has been a motion made and seconded. I think that there is, in the discussion on that motion, there is one question on this steel piece in terms of we need clarity of the direction on the steel piece. So I think in light of that, either we amend the motion or we withdraw the motion. If you want discussion on the steel piece, I would withdraw the motion. If you want to amend it for clarity on that, you can amend it. Bob, it's your motion, it's what's your pleasure?
Mike.
I would just say that if it were up to us, I would agree with you, Bob, to keep the 1/16 extra steel thickness in.
Okay, let me withdraw the motion and we'll try again. Press, you're sort of the expert on this.
Obviously not.
I don't think we need it either. I doubt whether the existing tank has that built into it. I don't know, it's so long ago, but I don't think it's needed.
Yeah, I mean, in my field, we always had corrosion allowance, but it was a very different aspect. As my gut is, we keep the maintenance up on the tank. So to save $200,000 seems like it's not a high-risk item.
$51,000.
Oh, it's only 51?
Yeah.
In that case, I'd say go with it.
That's sort of where we were coming from. I mean, it's a, it's a major asset.
The grinding of the wells was the 200,000.
It's a major asset that you're gonna have up there for hundreds or so years.
We used to grind the wells, but that was only because we coated them and then we needed to be able to decontaminate the surfaces. And so you wanted everything smooth with no nooks. It was not for any other reason.
Out of aesthetics.
They will still be grinding the wells, just to what degree?
To a degree, right. We would grind them to a high polish this way.
Ask another question. Without this 16th-inch allowance, what's the actual thickness of the steel that's going in?
So it varies. It's very thick at the bottom and then as the plates get to the top, it becomes thinner. I think, if I'm remembering correct, because I remember how surprised it was, the plates at the very top, because there's no load on them, are only about an eighth of an inch thick. because there's no load on them, are only about an eighth of an inch thick.
And the bottom? What's the magnitude? Half inch?
Like that column that supports everything, I think it's more than a half inch.
And so we're arguing that another 16th of an inch on the outside to allow for a 16th of an inch corrosion.
That's what we're talking about.
Is the issue. I'm not trying to put, I'm just trying to understand.
That's what they're talking about.
Talking about. So the bottom portion, for instance, could be more than a 16th of an inch of corrosion.
Probably not going to fall.
And you'll never see it, especially if you are maintaining on a regular basis, doing inspections and whatever.
But those upper plates, if it's an eighth, if I'm correct, then it's an eighth, an inch, 16th, you know.
More paint.
Possibly more paint. It's possible you can start developing pinholes, you know.
Except that when you weld, you get a full penetration weld, you're going to get a little stronger weld too.
All right, so do we have a new motion?
All right, I'd like to make a motion, subject to correction by Mike, to award, direct staff to award the million gallon tank to include the extra 1/8 steel.
1/16 corrosion reduction or allowance?
Allowance. And direct staff to pursue the other value reduction or cost reduction opportunities that are available.
Second?
I'll second.
The only, that was, well done, Bob. The only correction that I would request is to name the bidder.
Oh, CB and I.
CB and I, or used to be Chicago Bridge and I.
Actually, CB and I now. We changed their name years ago. All right, we have a motion in a second. We accept this amendment?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I can't see basically quadrupling the capacity and this amount of money at stake when we don't have a lot of money to waste. I think the issue of additional capacity can be solved in the future if it does occur. So I don't think this is a good use of the $500,000 or so dollars. So I can't come against.
So the vote is for one, no abstentions. And we move on to the next item, which is open forum discussion on pursuing the supplemental funding of $1 million from DHSS for the additional cost of the water tower project. Austin and GMB, I think it's mostly you, Austin, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Mike, make tag team because we discussed this too. So what staff has started is we started the process of supplemental funding. I actually just got an email from Monica confirming that everything she needed is received. And so she is moving forward and directed her staff to move forward with a supplemental of 1 million. What I'm asking for is the board's consent for us to move forward with binding commitment letters, knowing that by the time you come back for closing, you will have to approve the ultimate resolution and so will the city, which will move forward just like any other project with closing. At the end of the project, though, the 1 million will be added to the current 5.25 million that's already funded, similar to the supplemental that was done for the Headworks project. So all we're looking for is for the ability for staff to proceed forward with binding commitment once they're received, which continues the process moving forward. And then obviously caveating that all the resolutions and all of the approvals will come back through the board and also through city council per the charter. Mike, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, the only, the unique piece here is, as Austin said, it's the additional money is available through an administrative process. So the money is there. And so your typical process is you make the request. If you're awarded the money, then you approve a binding commitment. It goes to closing. As part of the closing process is when you have the formal resolutions for the board and then the charter requires the city. But here, you don't have to go to the request because the money's already there administratively. But you do need to approve it and approving it is a binding commitment that then sets in motion the closing process. So the request here is for staff to pursue the money that's available administratively.
I move that the staff pursue the money that's available administratively, the $1 million supplemental.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, open forum, general discussion. Oh, one second, let me check something. So Mike, I've not gotten a note back from Stephanie on that one additional change. So can we move forward with assuming that we're going to get that change?
Yes, no, that's fine.
So I think everyone has a copy of the RKL engagement letter for recruiting. And as background, RKL did the search last time and brought us Austin. Well, it was down to two people, Austin and another gentleman. They've done our salary surveys. They've done a lot of work for us. They're a known reputable operation. I've got the engagement letter from them. They made the two changes we asked for. There's one more that needs to get made because it says that the, it doesn't specify that the insurance is in the state of Delaware. I think that's not going to be a problem, but I have not heard back from Stephanie yet on it.
Who's insurance?
Their insurance.
And just some context on that. So based on the other change, they had a venue and choice of law provision that referenced Pennsylvania. I think their form has venue, insurance, choice of law, Pennsylvania. They made the change for venue and choice of law, did not make the correction on the insurance piece. But I think that's something that can be handled administratively.
And just to refresh you, so it's 500, it's a T and M contract, $500 an hour. We would run all of our candidates, both internal, our known external candidates, and then they would go out from test the market to find additional candidates. And they would do the initial screening and pass along the top contenders to us. The process from then on, we can discuss that in another meeting. But to get RKL started, this is the critical point. You will notice that in the table, Mike can't point to that, the table five, I think it is, it's $500 an hour for the T and M portion of recruiting. It says other services and then it gives job titles and rates. But that's only for things outside the scope of the recruitment.
And Tom, just to clarify, and I may have misheard virtually, but it's $200 an hour, right?
I'm sorry, 200.
Mike's going to a really different line of work.
I'm still on that $500,000 from the water tower. Or is that 5 million gallons? No, Mike, thank you very much for $200 an hour. So with that, are there any questions now or do I have a motion?
I have a motion that we proceed with retaining the firm, RKL.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. So item six, open forum, general discussion on the appointment of Mr. Robin Davis as interim general manager, and the effective date would be December 21st. Austin's last date is December 20th, after our Rehoboth Beach meeting. I want to put that on record.
Yes.
So. Any, we would follow the same protocol that we used when we hired Austin as the acting general manager last time. So, Mike, anything you want to add?
No, I think just to clarify timing a little bit. So I think Austin's technical last day is December 28th. But that last week will be, he'll be on vacation. And so that's why this is effective December 21. So the motion, should there be a motion, would be to appoint Robin as interim general manager effective December 21.
Thank you. That's correct, Mike. So I have a motion to appoint Robin?
Motion that we appoint Robin to be interim general manager effective starting December 21, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Robbins. And.
Get your hair.
There go your weekends, Rob.
It's still 21.
Item seven, we're going to defer. So with that, call to the public. Is there anyone online? No? Call to the press. Hello, Bill?
I just want to make sure I have the numbers correct on the bid. Can you clarify how much the bid is for, how much you're going to go for supplemental funds to pay for it, all those things? I just want to make sure I get the numbers correct.
Okay, so the, do you want both numbers? Do you want the 750 and the million or just a million?
Just give me the million, the one that passed. Okay. And you then voted on to proceed with trying to get another million to pay for it?
Supplemental funding, yes.
From the state?
Yep.
Okay. The other question I had is about the logo. I mean, that was a big thing. So is that included in the bid and did, I forget if you ever decided on what the logo will be?
Yeah, so it is included in the bid. It is going to be the initial thought from what we provided. And there's a graphic designer that they work with, so we'll get a copy of that so we can see it. The side facing King's Highway out towards Route 1 would be the Lewis BPW with the lighthouse on one side and then the city crest on the other. And then on the flip side is going to be the Cape Henlopen School Lake logo.
But Austin, just, sorry, but just to confirm, so that for cost purposes was specced, but it hasn't been officially formally approved, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the logos themselves haven't been approved, but it's included in the cost of the tower.
Okay. Wasn't there an artist rendering showing the Cape logo and maybe a?
Yes, we had a similar one and it just says Cape.
Yeah.
I think it was the one that just said Cape.
It says Cape, yeah. Can you send that to me?
Yes.
I looked around in our files. I didn't see it.
Yeah, I can send it to you.
The other question I had was, I can back to my notes here. So just for the average person, talk about the function of the water tower. What is it, what does it do and what does the average person see from it or?
So from an engineering perspective, you guys may want to chime in, but a lot of people, so you use it for a pressure equalization and then you also use it for emergency storage. So for whatever reason, if you had to take your wells offline, that storage would provide equalization for a period of time, which helps you if you need to do anything behind the water treatment plant or anything like that. But also if you have a fire, it also provides storage in that aspect. If you have a huge demand, it provides that additional storage. Anything I'm missing?
No, I think, because our tonne of wells, if all five are running, produce how much?
Well, the estimate was over three thou. Currently, it's like. Yeah, what is it?
That's with, that's four wells.
Four of the five.
Yeah, four out of five.
And minus one, yeah.
Also, I have a question. Is the water that's in the tower treated, it's already treated water, yeah?
So the other function of the tower is like on peak demand where the wells aren't able to keep up with the flow.
Yes.
You're drawing the towers down.
And it also provides.
Morning irrigation kicking in.
And it also provides your wells getting a rest because now you have that much more storage in that your system can draw from, doesn't necessarily automatically call for the wells to be on and all five wells running simultaneously all summer long. Because that's where we ran into a lot of O and M costs because, you know, you have 300,000 gallons in the air and the way that it used to, the treatment plant used to be actually right on Schley Avenue. So it would go to Schley Avenue, get treated and go right to the tower. Now your treatment plant's out at the well field and as time progressed, you have all these mains that are scattered throughout town and some of them used to be the old distribution mains where you would have raw water coming in and as development occurred, you tying into those. So now you have people that are drawing from the same mains that are going to the water tower.
So you see about water demand over the day is cyclic and the wells running and the surge volume or deficit is going to tank there.
Okay. And the old tower, that's staying in service?
Yep, staying in service.
Okay, okay, that's.
Bill, did you want the number after we did the cost reduction? So the actual number will be?
The, I would say with the cost, what was it, the engineered savings?
Yeah.
We were looking at roughly 6,118,300.
Yeah, that's what I calculated too. Thank you.
All right, so that's the actual final number?
Hypothetically, yes.
If you got to save, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
It may fluctuate up, it may fluctuate down depending on how it works.
Right. Oh, one other question. Did you have to draw from the water tower with the water outage back in August?
There was no water in the water tower.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So that led to the issue when the water went out?
Yeah, because in theory you go to the water tower first.
Yeah, okay.
We used it to flush the canal.
All right, thank you.
Aye. And I'll send you that logo, Bill.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
All right, do I have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
All those.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.